Okay, we are, we are recording now, just FYI. For everyone, welcome everyone to what has been awhile since our last walkable community meeting. So we have, Holly, before you jump, are you still with us, Holly?
Yeah.
I am.
Let me just do a quick intro, what our agenda is and what we're hoping to do, because I think there's going to be one or two questions from you or for you that come out of that. So the main two agenda items that we want to cover tonight is number one, to review this and kind of integrate some of the input that people have provided. Again, more than I had originally thought, but all good input, so we want to make sure we coordinate that. And it looks like we're going to have to go back to RK and K for some minor changes. So my question is, you know, Derek and Holly can answer this better than me. Is the is it part of our current scope to go back to them with a handful of minor changes? Or would that be a change order that they would charge us additional funds for?
They, per the contract, they have to deliver within the scope of work that we've contracted them. So I think as long as the requests are within that scope of work, there would not be a change order and they should just complete those. And, and when they sent it over, they seemed very open to providing any clarification or further detail that was necessary to close it out.
Okay. So my guess is that these changes, for the most part, will fall within that definition. And I don't think we're actually asking them to do additional work, we're just looking for some clarifications and then, you know, some frankly typographical errors and things like that.
Yeah.
And then the second part of this is that we once we on the committee sign off on this plan, we want to come to council with the proposed resolution to adopt this formally. And I'm just wondering, the logistics, Derek and Holly, you guys have more experience at this than me. In order to get it on the agenda for a work session, what form that takes and and what are the steps there for us?
I would say when, when you're ready, just let me know and we'll make sure we get it on a work session agenda. And then I think it would move forward on a town council meeting for formal adoption by the town council, which should probably be the, the step that it should take. And I'll have to check and see, I think that would just be possibly a resolution, not necessarily an ordinance.
And yeah, that's what I would expect too. And Holly, would you draft, is it, is it you that would normally draft that resolution? I mean, it should be basically one paragraph that we accept the plan, but there's always some legalese and formality behind that.
Yes, we always run our resolutions by Todd, so, so yes, we'll take care of that.
Okay.
And make sure you see it as well before it's finalized.
Okay. So realistically, we might be able to do that for the more, I'd love to be able to do it for the March work session. But to turn around, maybe that it, that's not until April. Derek, do you have any thoughts on that based on, you would, you had had some scheduling thoughts, you and I were talking about offline.
Right, I mean, if they can turn this around to us, you know, when we send them for updates, they could turn it around pretty quick. And I suspect they probably could. We could get it on the March work session. I know talking with the mayor briefly, that there are a few things on the March work session agenda. So that was probably going to be a busy one. I don't think this would probably take that long to talk about, honestly.
Yeah, that would be my sense too. I don't think, I, I mean, I don't want to speak too soon, but I think it'd be a no brainer that there may be some questions from fellow council folks, but they're not, no one's going to have an issue with what's the content of this report.
Right, and they've seen most of it already. Maybe not all, maybe not all of it, but most of it. So it might just be a, you know, an overview of, you know, the final review, the, you know, the recommendation from, from the work group. And then just a quick review of the draft resolution. You know, so I don't, I think we could get it on the March agenda. I mean, as in my understanding of what's going to be on there, we could probably get it on there and not really take too long. You know, on the March work session and then vote on it in, in the meeting in March.
So I think I, between us, I think we should try to make that a goal, because I think the sooner we do that, the better. We can get it over to Chris Chukubiac and the planning and zoning folks and everything else. So I'd hate to have it wait a month. If we can avoid it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, well, thanks, Holly. I don't know, you're obviously, I don't know if you, how much longer you plan to stay, but I, I have host of the meeting, it's being recorded. So unless you have any questions for us, I, I don't think we have anything else specifically targeted to you. So I just want you to feel free to do whatever you want to do with the rest of your evening.
Okay, great, and I'll follow up with you on the recording. Thank you, enjoy your meeting.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Holly.
Thanks.
Bye now. So my recommendation or my thought here is that we go through the report with comments from the main two people that I have comments from, very specific comments from our Madeline and Derek. And a very short list of my own. Derek, if I'm driving the meeting, are you okay taking notes in the document that we've been working in?
Yes, I'll, I'll do that.
Are you sure you're okay with that? If not.
Yeah, because, because mine are already in there, so I can, I can add Madeline's as well and, and any other ones that Amanda or anyone else has. And, you know, clean it up a little bit and then we can just cut and paste it out of that into a clean document and go from there, so yeah, I'll do that.
Since I'm sharing my screen, I'm going to, I'll rely on you then to do that.
So just, I'm going to be on mute, so just give me a minute to get back to this, to unmute if you have any questions for me. But I'll be on the other page.
That sounds good. And before we go any further, can we do a quick kind of a roll call and hello? Just to make sure we have everyone here and they're able to provide input. So I'm just going to run through people I see on my screen, just say hi if you have your mute button on, unmute just for a sec. Let us know who you are and give us a sentence about what you're, what you're here for tonight. So I'm going to start with Madeline.
Hi.
You're not on mute, good to see you, Madeline, how you doing?
Good.
What is your sweat, what does your sweatshirt say?
Colorado.
All right. Derek, we've already heard from, and then RB, I'm sorry, I don't know who that is, I know you spoke earlier, I apologize.
Sorry, Rick Birch from Chesapeake Village.
All right, well, welcome. Amanda, I see you, how are you doing?
You know, I had comments, but I wanted to wait till we were all together to discuss them.
Good, so we'll hear from you then throughout the meeting, I guess.
Yes, as we go through the document.
Cool.
Amanda, you're very faint. Can you turn your volume up?
Okay, I tried before.
Or just yell right into your microphone.
Okay, I probably need to yell, can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better. And then the only other person I see on the call is Laurel.
Hi, good evening, my name is Laurel Matthews and I live in the Bayview Hills community.
How are you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. I think we lost Lori again, I don't know why. So I'm going to do real quick, I'm going to stop sharing and just change a little bit my MO here for sharing. So that I can look at some of the things on the rest of my screen, so bear with me one second.
We have a couple other folks on the line too, Charlie.
That's everyone that, oh, Sarah Kemfer.
Yeah, hi, this is Sarah Kemfer, I'm also in Bayview Hills, just interested in what's happening.
Cool, nice to see you, glad you're on the call. Larry, you want to say anything?
Hey, everybody, Larry, Juarez Street Town Council.
And is that everyone, Derek, did I get everyone?
Christina, Christine.
Christine Cirilla, boy, that's interesting, I'm not, I have to scroll to find those people. Christina, how are you doing?
Hi, I'm fine, I'm also in Bayview Hills and just interested in what's going on. Thank you.
Good, well, welcome, thanks for taking some time out tonight.
Sure.
All right, I'm going to share the plan again. Can everyone see, can everyone see the plan?
Yes.
So I'm going to just move through the plan, I guess, and as we go through here, let people jump in with comments. Madeline, if you see something that's one of the typos that you had commented on, you don't need to, well, you're welcome to, I shouldn't say that. But know that I have all of your comments, so they can just be forwarded along. But if you see something egregious or something that you missed, that you didn't see the first time around, then, then feel free to jump on that. Can everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Everyone see what I'm sharing? Good. All right. So I'm going to scroll down, someone stop me when I get to a section where they had comments. Derek, I know you had a comment on figure three. So that was here.
Yeah, standby one, Charlie, Lori and Teresa are trying to get in and they, they are not able to, so I'm trying to find the link to send them. Yes, figure three is, is my, my first comment. So this is actually really more for Holly. This, this dash line on the left that goes from northwest to southeast, that is in a proposed road the county was discussing. And in one of our earlier meetings, I believe she recommended them take that out. I just, I want to verify that with Holly and, and, and if that was the case, because that one's not, that has, we have no purview on that at all. So it was thought that we don't need to include that in our report, because it's totally out of our jurisdiction, our control, everything. So I think she recommended to take that out, but I just wanted to verify that with Holly.
I'm letting a bunch of people, there, there's a bunch of people in the waiting room, that was my fault, I neglected to. All right, I just let a bunch of people in the room. Sorry about that. So Lori Blackwelder, you're with us. So you're, I think you might be in twice, Lori, but make sure you're not muted. Ken Rasmussen. Say hello if you're here, Ken.
I'm here, thanks.
Good to see you. Eric. And Chris Martinez also joined.
Yeah, Chris Martinez here, sorry for the late join, we were going to the wrong link.
That's right, you're all welcome. All right, so Derek, your suggestion here is that we, that we nixed that that road and what, I mean, that's fine, I guess, that it's outside of our jurisdiction, is that the thought?
Yes, it was, that is, I'm trying to remember what the name of the road is, some, some of you probably will know. But the county would have to extend that. And there was thought that they might extend that to Dal Ripple to the south.
Pushaw Road?
Yes, Pushaw, yeah, 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 yeah. So there were, there was some chatter, some talk that the county may extend that, which is why it's on here. But I recall Holly recommended taking that off, because again, we don't, there's, we have no, you know, we have no dog in that discussion, so it didn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be really our place to, so to include that. But I'll, we'll have to just check with Holly, I believe she asked for that to be taken off. And probably was the same meeting as one of my other comments that I'm going to talk about, that they didn't, they didn't change.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, I think for clarity, it's a good idea, because otherwise, you don't want to, you don't want to raise questions that aren't, that don't need to be raised.
Right, it gives the impression that we, you know, we, there's a priority that we have to recommend putting that road in, and that's not, because we don't have any, the town doesn't have any control over that whatsoever.
All right, I'm going to keep moving through.
So I have a comment on this page. And this is really an editorial, there's going to be other ones along the same lines. But in this first paragraph of the assessment methods, they refer to our group again by the full name, but they've, they've already established the acronym. And there's other places later on where it's the same. So I have a number of comments for them to just consistently use the same acronym. Later, they also use WCC, Walkable Community Committee, which many of you will remember, that's what we called ourselves in the very, very beginning.
Oh, really?
We, we changed that, so yeah, they referred to that as well. So there'll be comments to just make it consistent throughout the document, because that'd be confusing.
Yeah, I would agree with that. All right. Moving along.
I see you're in the document, Charlie.
Say that again, Derek?
I see that you're in the, in our, in the Google document.
Yeah, I'm trying to anticipate when you're going to jump in next, but again, my page numbers don't match up with your.
Yeah. So my next comment is on this page here, Mama Lucia is using that picture, and it was really just a question for clarification, do we need to get their approval to use their name and their business in our, you know, town published report? So we should just check with that, you'd check with town hall and maybe even just reach out to Mama Lucia's and make sure that they're, I'm, I'm sure they will be okay with it, but we just should make sure that they're okay with that.
Okay, I marked that as a to do item, Derek. I, I can't imagine they're going to have a problem with that.
I would agree, I don't think they will either, but we should just at least make them aware of it.
Right thing to do, okay.
So this figure here is another, I have another comment. So the orange lines indicate existing sidewalks. So we have existing sidewalks on 260 from the intersection up to G Street. But those are not indicated on this figure. So we should add those.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that's, and those are, and this was really to highlight major sidewalks or walkways or boardwalks. And I mean, we have other ones in, you know, in the, in the HOAs and whatnot. I mean, this, it would get very cluttered if we added all those. But, you know, for the purposes of this broad picture of the town, we wanted to add the major ones in the town, really to highlight the gaps. And so we need to include the ones from the intersection, you know, by the flagpole up to G Street.
Plus, I think it, it, it also emphasizes how they kind of end abruptly.
Right.
So I, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I have a comment, can you hear me?
Yes. Man.
Also on the map, and it was on the figure, I forgot the last figure that had the map sort of like this, it doesn't have the HI and J Street on it. It stops at Dakota Avenue on all the maps except for one.
Oh, the labeling. Yes.
Dakota Avenue, but you don't have HI and J Street.
Okay.
And that comes up again with connectivity.
Yeah, I've got that.
Cool. All right, onward.
Small editorial on this page you're coming to is page 20 of the report, the same comments before with the acronym. Up it, up there on the, that first paragraph right there, yeah, they defined it again. So it's a minor change. Oh, I see, and figure eight coming up, Amanda, yeah, that's the same.
Could I just interject for a moment, this is Ken.
Yeah.
I have a, I, I was teaching until like 7:05, so I apologize for being late. Is this document downloadable anywhere, or is this a work in progress that we can't view yet, except as we are right now?
Derek, that's a good question, have we made this, have we made an electronic copy of this available to public yet?
No, the, the, the plan was to have our group review this, and you're welcome to stay on, of course. Have a review this, get the comments to our planning firm, have them finalize it, and then share it with the public when, when we make the recommendation to town hall. So yeah, this hasn't fully been shared with the public yet, because there's still updates to be, revisions to be made.
And we don't want a bunch of digital copies floating around that aren't the, you know, that aren't the official copy. There, there have been, well, that's irrelevant now, but there's been a number of times where, where these documents have been presented in public. But so at this point, really, the best thing to do is to follow along in the meeting.
Okay, I was just, I wasn't able to see some details on a previous page, it's not so bad right now. But yeah, I was just curious primarily about what was envisioned down around Brownie's Beach. So I'll just have to look carefully to, to see it, it seemed like it was pretty small scale.
Yeah, there's going to be some maps later on, which you've probably seen before. And if, you know, want to stop and talk about those a little bit, you know, we can certainly do that.
Sure, okay, thanks.
Yeah, we haven't passed, we certainly haven't passed that yet, so stay tuned.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep moving forward.
Okay, you know, stop on this page here. So the text in the blue box. It's going too far. So on page, which is 23 in the, in the report, that blue box, that text ends abruptly. So it looks like it's missing. It, it got cut off.
That's a good catch, I didn't totally not catch that, okay, good.
It might be a minor detail, but sea level rise is not going to be two feet in 2050, but by 2050 and 2100. Might want to just rephrase that. It might make people think there was going to be an abrupt change in a previous page, go back a little bit.
Yeah, let me know where you saw that.
Yeah, right there, second paragraph, will rise by 2.1 feet and 5.7 feet in 2050, it would be by 2050.
Yeah, that's a good call. You got that, Derek, yeah, you do, okay. Good, I'm going to keep moving forward.
But you'd want to do the same thing in the last sentence of that paragraph for the 2.1 and the 5.7.
The, the end of that paragraph is where I was actually looking, where it says, right before respectively, by 2050 and 2100, not in.
Yeah, and I think I had highlighted the beginning of the paragraph, so I think both those should be tweaked.
It shows up again, yep.
Yep. All right.
I can't read the small print, but is it correct under that map?
Here.
Go up a bit. Is the text right, talking about sea level rise? In the for or the by?
There's not a date.
Yeah, there's no date there.
In, in the legend.
I did zoom in a little bit, is that more readable, Madeline?
Yes, a little bit.
Look at all those people standing around in public without masks, oh yeah, that was about a year and a half ago.
All right, so ironically, and Larry, Larry might catch this right there, Charlie.
Yep.
That, that needs to be changed to taste the beaches, not taste of the beaches. It's both the title and in the paragraph, we just have to remove of.
Thank you.
I saw that and I thought of you, Larry.
Good.
On 28, this is where they shift to WCC, Walkable Community Committee. And it's, it's used a number of times on a few pages after this, so I request them to change the, all of those to to be consistent.
Just flipping back, I don't see that in your notes, oh, I do see it, never mind, I do see it, okay. These notes are basically going to be the source of truth to forward RK, I also make sure I saw them there, that's all. All right. Just back up, Charlie, in that blue highlight on the previous page. The very first following the Taste of Chesapeake Beach Piggyback Engagement Event, what was that? I guess that should be Taste the Beaches. Okay. Derek, did you note that?
Uh, no, but I will, here's a second.
Thank you.
I see it. Yeah, in, in that, later in that blue box, Chesapeake Beach is spelt wrong too, so.
Can you misspell Chesapeake Beach here?
At the very last, the very last use of.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Go back to 28 down a little bit, please.
Down to here, is that right?
That's 29, she wanted 28.
Say again, Amanda?
I had made a note, three that attracted attention, it was in a sentence.
Where, where is that? That's not what I wanted to do. Is it there?
I wanted to ask, what were those?
I'm sorry, Amanda, I'm not understanding your question, I guess.
I have to read, that's okay, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Send it to us after, if need be. Or we can review it later, of course.
All right, I'm going to keep moving forward.
Oh, yeah, on the figure, yeah, so this was one of my bigger comments, so when we met with them, Holly and I met with them in November, we were reviewing some of the initial comments, and it goes later on. We were reviewing some of the initial comments and it goes later on as well, but made the comment that the part of the Highlands, which is the north side of 260 is not, and even behind the Legion are the only areas of town that aren't represented in, in any of these maps. And so it asked them, and this, this will be more for later when they get into Plan One, but Nathan had indicated that he would, because, you know, because when we get to Plan One, it's all dependent on state highway in discussions with state highway. So we agreed that they would put some annotations on those maps to include the Highlands and behind the Legion. Just so it's clear that we, we need to connect those areas as well, rather than just the south side out to Richfield Station. Then they, doesn't appear that they did that. So they were gonna make a, a change on this one and then later on as well and in, in Plan One. Project One. So I just made a note to, they were gonna put a, a line on the north side of 260 out to extending out from G Street to the Highlands. Just to illustrate that we need to have that discussion as well.
Just a question. Do we have any idea in the Heritage whether there will be sidewalks in that development?
I believe the contractor is putting sidewalks in the Heritage and they already have them on Cox Road. So I believe, I believe so. Yes. I believe the answer to your question is yes, here, Larry.
Might want to be added. They also added sidewalks on 260 that are essentially worthless. They're sidewalks to nowhere.
Right. Well, the, the idea was that, that we would connect to them at some point, especially in Cox Road. But we, we're not adding the sidewalks in the neighborhoods on, on this broad map. But it, it will show up in the, in one of the later maps.
Got it. Thank you.
It will show up in there.
Laurel, you had a question?
I did. Thank you. Um, when you're referencing the sidewalks on Cox Road, I'm sure you guys have visited it, but they've only added a brief section of sidewalk to the Heritage. It does not extend the full length of Cox Road.
That's correct.
Yeah, sidewalk to nowhere.
They're, they're responsible for the part of Cox Road that abuts that subdivision. So they're, the builders put that in. But we, we would be responsible for the rest of it.
Great, thanks.
Other questions, comments? I'm gonna move forward.
Can I just add a general comment?
Yep.
It might be worthwhile to insert in here as we talk about these various improvements, sidewalks and walking paths and such, that we try to be as environmentally sensitive as possible with reflection on climate change, you know, porous pavement and those kinds of things. Just to be consistent with climate change.
I, um.
I think you're gonna find a lot of that sprinkled throughout.
Yeah, is there something specific, Larry, that was missing or you're just saying that that should be an MO as we, as we go?
It should, it should be an MO. I have not read the full report, so if it's in there, I missed it.
It is here.
Yeah, I, I think these guys are, that's one area where they're, they're pretty solid.
Yeah, very conscious of that, yes.
Stop me if I'm going too fast through this or tell me to go faster if I'm going too slow.
My next comment is now page 55, so. 55 of the report.
So that's 58 for me.
I was on this one.
Hold up. Yes, ma'am.
They say Old Bayside Road and then in another one, they say Bayside, um.
Trail.
I think it was Old Bayside Trail. And in another place, they say Old Bayside Sidewalk. In the list of priorities, it, it said this, um, safe routes to school. They talked about the safe routes to school.
Yeah, because part of the safe routes to school goes up to E Street off Old Bayside.
Right, but it's about the, in, in one place, they call it one thing and then in another, they call it somewhere else. I mean, some, they call it something else. That I just made a note that it needs to be consistent as far as how they name it.
Is that on the, the map, Amanda?
No, it's not the map. It's the listing of priorities.
Oh, that was back a little ways.
They call it Old Bayside. Old Bayside Sidewalk.
Do you, do you have a page number for me?
Well, the first one I, I had written page 52.
So that would be here?
Yeah.
But in the list of priorities, I believe it was called, um.
Is it this project you're talking about, Old Bayside Trail?
Number 10.
All right, let me keep moving forward to see if we can find where it's referred to differently. Okay?
All right. Sorry.
That's all right. I want to get it all, you know, accurate. So Derek, I think you have comments here.
Next page. Yeah, so in the text on this page, you'll see in the first paragraph, they list a new pathway linking Richfield Station, Heritage Woods, Bayview Hills and surrounding neighborhoods. I'm gonna, I would ask them to include the Highlands in that text.
Although Derek, the one, the one exception here is that these are all neighborhoods that abut each other and the Highlands don't.
No, but in the, in the next paragraph or the next page, when they go through option A, B, and C, you'll see, and then it's gonna be another one of my recommendations. So if you go to the, the next page, if you look at option B, you'll see on the right side, it says safe crossing Cox Road.
Yep.
And we need to include, I'm gonna request that they include a purple line up to the north part of Route 60 and include safe crossing to St. Andrews.
Yeah, that's right here, right?
Yes. So there's two pages, this and then on the, I believe on the next, there's another, one of the other pages, two pages. So from now, an option C, I'm gonna ask for the same thing, but that.
Yeah, right here.
Yes, to, to indicate that, you know, we need a crossing there. If, if these project, if the project moving forward is on the south side of, you know, the, the eastbound lane on the south side, then, you know, we need to better highlight the need for that safe crossing there. But yeah, to your point, couple pages back, two, couple, two or three pages, a few pages back, when they introduced this project. One more, one more back.
Yeah, here.
Uh, yes. So up on, on the top, you see the line, you know, the highlight that they put in encompasses both sides of 260, which is okay. Uh, but I think in these closer in maps that we, we need to include as many references to the communities on the north side of 260 as we can.
You know what, Derek? I, I, um, with all due respect, I don't think they are referencing both sides. I think it just happens to be that the size of the line is big enough to overwrite the street. But if you read location, it's very specific, south side of Maryland 260.
I, I agree. No, I agree.
Reword that. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. And that's why, uh, you know, when we talked back in November, Nathan was going to make some changes to reflect that. They didn't on, on the maps, but yeah, I agree. If there's opportunities to, in the text to encompass that as well, then we should, we should recommend that.
Okay.
So yeah, if, if, maybe perhaps in this box, I didn't, I mean, it just said between Harrison and Town Center, which, which is fine, but this, you know, this right here didn't indicate the communities, but later in the text it did. And that's why I was suggesting to put the Highlands in there.
But it says Henderson, not Harrison.
Oh, yeah. Oh, you're right. Good catch.
They did that someplace else.
Yep, they sure did.
I'm just, I'm watching Derek type, so I'm just making sure that we capture those changes.
Uh, lowered. Oh, that's right. Cancel.
Good.
Yeah, if you, if you see where they do it again, Madeline would just either point it out here or, or.
I already told Charlie.
Oh, you? Okay.
Yeah, I have it in.
All right. So what, we can update this later.
All right, okay to move on?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
They started with project one here. When you have, see the list of projects, page 52. On page 29, are the, are they supposed to be coordinated?
So earlier, they, they lumped projects by categories. There were three categories. And so the, when they came back to the projects, that's why they're jumbled up a little bit. One and I think was it one in, they're not in numerical order based on that sheet.
Because when they first present them, as they talk about them later, they aren't, the numbering isn't consistent.
Right, right. Earls, earlier in the document, they, there were three broader categories of the projects, and I believe they coincide with those broader categories.
Okay, so that was the three that attracted interest perhaps that I had written a note about. It's, it's confusing when you're reading the whole document, trying to follow with it, the way they're presenting it.
Yeah, so if you go down to page 63, you see this, the next section is connecting recreation and mobility, and then all of the projects that fit under recreation and mobility are listed there.
Comment on option C? Um, hold on one second. If I could just, I just want to, I just want to make sure we've covered what Amanda asked about. So Amanda, is that, does that numbering make sense then in terms of the, with the way they're sectioned out?
Yeah, so the three categories are connected core, network mobility, recreational amenities and recreational amenities. So they, the, uh, I think, I believe the plans are listed within those categories.
They made the assessment with the town, they, or ever, or people to vote on which ones they were more interested in. I thought it was one of that list.
Right.
I think that was on page 29. Where they ranked all of the different priorities. But when you get into the document, they, they, they make other lists that aren't consistent with what they started out with.
You're talking about, not here.
The results, the results of the survey?
Exactly.
Yeah, I don't think these are listed in the order of the results of the survey.
I, I know they're not, and I'm just wondering, why wasn't emphasis put on that? If the town said they wanted this, this, and this, why weren't they addressing it in that manner?
So I remember from our discussions along the way, they wanted to capture similar projects. You know, so that, so the discussion, like the, the background discussion was similar for the, the sections. So they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't have a, you know, the crosswalks, which was what project two, and then, you know, say one of the Fishing Creek Trails is the next one, and then jump back to Cox Road Sidewalk and then jump back to a boardwalk and then jump back to, you know, Old Bayside Road. You see how, how that would kind of jump around? They, they put the, the light projects together or in, you know, in groups. That was their philosophy.
Okay.
I think in their mind, it flowed a little better that way.
So Amanda, I, I see your, your point, but I think that right now, now is probably not the time to make that level of change in the plan because they would really have to go back and renumber everything. And I don't, I mean, for our own conversation, I, I don't think it's gonna be that helpful to, to do that. Are you okay with that?
Yes, I'm just looking at when we talk about implementation. Are we implementing because all together or are we implementing things because this is what the town wanted?
Yeah, it'll definitely be the latter.
Yeah. When we, when we pick, when we start picking, that's the motive, that's the, the, the main factor that will impact that, well, that and funding.
Right.
I understand.
Yep.
Um, okay, there was another comment. Um, I think it might have been Ken on, on this. Do you want?
No, it was Larry. It was Larry. I guess I would describe this as a very ambitious option. I think the realities of it happening are very near zero and the impact on traffic flow in and out of town would be dramatic. And I, I wonder if it even should be in the plan.
Yep, I don't disagree with you, Larry. And we talked about this as well as it was being developed. And the reason they wanted to put that in there was when those discussions occur with state highway, they wanted to show all, and I, and I'll say reasonable loosely, uh, because I agree with you. This is pretty, uh, pretty big pull. But they wanted to show, you know, a number of different options to state highway and then, and to start those discussions and allow that, you know, the ultimate plan to evolve from there. So I think every one of us agree that option C is probably. Plan to evolve from there. So I think every one of us agree that option C is probably not realistic. Uh, but it does put a little more emphasis on the earlier two options.
Well, I can also agree, Derek, with the idea, when you come up with plans, it's sometimes is a good idea to put things in there that you know won't go. So they can get thrown out as part of the compromise. So I'm okay with that.
Exactly. Uh, uh, you, you stated it well.
I would just um say that I would hate to see that no accommodation was made for increased safety for. Bicycling. Uh, if there was any way to uh modify the existing. Westbound and or eastbound so that it was a little safer to bike. I uh. I avoided biking uh for fifteen years upon moving here, coming from Northern Virginia where there were bike paths. But anything uh that can be done to make biking a little safer, I think is good. I'd hate to see the baby thrown out with the bathwater. I agree with Larry that a wholesale revision of eastbound and what versus westbound. Sounds like pie in the sky, but um can, can modifications to that be made for a, a little safer biking?
Right, so on that, on that point, Ken, sorry to interrupt. Uh, so that was, that was the discussion I was having before about linking the Highlands. And the, in the uh, the Legion area. I made that very same point. And suggested perhaps installing a curb along the westbound lanes of 260. To separate the, the vehicle lanes and, and it's a pretty wide area for either biking or walking. And their position was, they thought that would not be acceptable to state highway. Because that's an emergency egress. Uh, you know, from, from the beaches area, it's emergency egress out of the beaches. And so it's restricting the potential to use a third egress, emergency egress lane would not be favorable. Uh, so the compromise was that they would put the line on the map and allow us to have that discussion with state highway. To just modify the northbound, I said the northbound, the westbound lane on the, the north side of this area, 260. And I'll, and.
Yeah, I.
See, and see, and see if they would actually consider something along those lines to provide that safe biking. And, and pedestrian access on the, on that westbound lane.
Yeah, I would, I would say that that area that you described in the area of the American Legion is nice and wide, and it. It's an area that I bike on frequently to get to, uh, what is it, St. Andrews, to use that area to bike. But um, what about just simply marking it in a more um permissive way? With, you know, for example, the green stripes that are shown on the cartoons. Um, you know, part of the problem with, for bicyclists. Is just that motorists don't seem to think that they have a right to be there. And even if there wasn't a physical barrier like a curb, and I can understand them not wanting to inhibit egress, as you mentioned. But appropriate markings so that it's clear that, you know, bikes actually have a right to be there. And that you're not just being a jackass and biking in the wrong area, you know what I mean?
Right, no, that's a great point, and that might be a, an easy compromise.
I think.
Acceptable compromise to.
It is nice and wide there already.
Paint that, so it's very, is visible.
Yeah, and that's not gonna, that's not gonna inhibit any kind of uh traffic uh in an emergency situation.
Alright, yeah, I'll, I'll take that note. That's a good point. But that was, that was actually the, the discussion we had uh back in November. Was to, to put those lines on the, on this plan to facilitate that type of discussion with state highway. For the westbound side, which would, you know, connect uh those two areas that are omitted right now.
So I just wanted to jump in, uh, just lend two more cents to this conversation. Uh, one cent is. Uh, you know, I, I'm also a big biker, Ken, so uh I'm out on these roads quite a bit. And uh, yeah, the notion of a separate trail, as elegant as it is, really doesn't solve the problem. Because it doesn't connect to anything. So, you know, if you want to bike further out, you know, all the way out to uh 260 and Owings. Or, or all the way out to Route Four, um, it really doesn't help you much.
Right.
And, and that's, you know, that's just kind of the reality of, of the entire county.
Yeah, it chokes out there. I know, it's a death wish.
Or an aggressive way to get your exercise. Um, and then the uh, the other part of this, and Lori may want to speak up to this. But there was a certain appeal to, there, there was a buzzword we were kicking around when you look at the, the plan C here, which was road diet. And there was a real um marketing uh leverage to you, having the notion of a road diet. To actually reducing what's available, uh, but still leaving it available in case of emergency. And that was part of what motivated this option C. And I would hate to see it leave the plan, even if it doesn't end up happening. Because I think it draws attention to the intent of um, you know, what we'd like to do in, 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 in seeing less. Less lanes for cars.
Anything that increases bikeability and walkability is something I feel that we can always start strong. And if you have to give up terrain for dollars or space, that's good, but that's fine. But if you don't ask, you won't receive, I suppose. So, yeah.
Laurel, your hand is still up. Is that from your previous question, or did you have something new?
No, that was from previous, thanks.
Alright. Alright, I'm gonna keep moving us forward here. Good discussion on that.
So on, no, no, sorry, keep going. So on this page right here. In the noted, the Kellam's Field front page, the first page, yeah. So in noted challenges, which is in the, the blue box, the fourth one down. Says environmental challenges with sinking field. I, I suggest that they also add sea level rise. To show, change that to. You know, environmental challenges with sea level rise and sinking field.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I, I think um, one of the uh things that people, people often don't realize is that. Fresh water has to drain downhill, and fresh water is going to get elevated by a higher water table. And so, you know, if someone comes at you and says, well, you know, sea level is only going to be two point one feet higher by twenty fifty. Well, number one, that's an enormous change, but number two, it means that the drainage. Uh, is going to be limited well before that. In fact, it already is. If you ever go to shoreline locations, uh, for example, uh, you know, uh Bethany Beach. Or um Ocean City, you know that the, the freshwater table buoyantly floats. On the Chesapeake Bay water table, you know, and they migrate upward together as sea level rises. So you're going to lose drainage from Kellam's Field long before it becomes um inundated by brackish water. It's going to get, that it won't drain for a period of time, and, and, and it's just going to get worse.
I agree with Ken. When I took my class on becoming a climate change professional, one of the examples they gave was that very instance. So not only is the water going to come up in the bay, but the drainage from the Highlands is going to be restricted.
Totally.
So does Derek's suggested change cover that? Is that sufficient?
Well, I would just say uh drainage is an important word to have in there, because, you know, if it rains heavily. And we're getting more extreme rainfall events with climate change, it's not just bay level rise. It's also more extreme packages of intense rainfall. Drainage is going to be a really important issue. And you can't drain if the water table is high. So I would just say uh drainage from Kellam's Field. Parenthese, rising bay, rising water table, sinking landscape, um, you know. You're between a rock and a hard place, so it's got multiple problems with drainage.
Or a rock and a soft place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Rock and a sinking place.
And just to add to that, you know, when we talk about two sixty-one, we're already seeing increased flooding of two sixty-one. In the area of the firehouse and the marsh.
Yeah.
Basically closing off that road. So as we look at walkability, that's another issue that needs to be considered.
You know, they're elevating, uh, you know, north of North Beach, they're elevating from North Beach up towards. What is it, uh, Holland Point? There's a construction project going on there. You might want to look into what North Beach is doing at that Calvert Arundel uh boundary. To uh see what kinds of um, you know, eventualities they're planning for in the area of. Um, I guess it's, they call it uh Walton Beach.
Yeah.
Reserve.
Yep.
Yeah.
We, we have and we continue to, to keep track of what they're doing, really what state highways do in there.
How much are they elevating the roadway there? Do you know, Lawrence?
Um, Larry, what is it, three feet?
I thought it was two.
I heard, um, I think Madeline is right, I think it's two feet.
They're optimists.
Doesn't sound like much.
It's the inconvenient truth, everybody.
Boy, that goes back.
I'm older than I look.
I can't actually see you, but uh, you sound young.
That's because I teach college students.
Yeah, and I, Larry Jaworski has raised a number of times the, the notion that um, it's highly likely. We would speculate that state highway is going to come in and want to do a similar project, uh, you know, from, from roughly two. On, on two sixty-one, from roughly two sixty up to the Chesapeake North Beach border, uh, First Street. When you say that's right.
Yes, I would, and as a member of the fire department, we're also sort of advocating the state highway, that they need to start looking at that. Because it's basically shutting off access from the fire department north.
Yikes.
Alright, on that happy note, I'm going to keep scrolling.
Excuse me, on these maps, it's not showing St. Andrews, should it? Oh yes, it does. It's very pale. Let's see it.
Yep.
It's there.
Good.
Charlie, on that one, just um, I don't know if it's the next one, but I haven't read this report. But in terms of uh walkways, uh, the previous slide talked about boardwalks. Is that something that would be considered as part of linking the existing sidewalk between. Keep pointing to call it Pink Palace, but uh, its official name is Horizons on the Bay. And uh, north of that through Seagate, would that be a boardwalk or a sidewalk? Do we have any recommendations in there?
Yes, and it's, and right now, it's, it's laid out as a boardwalk for a number of reasons. Um, yeah, it's laid out as a boardwalk.
No, I think that's a good idea, because if we did the boardwalk right, we might not have to interfere with SHA.
That's part of it. Um, the, the height is part of it. Uh, the ADA accessibility is part of it. And um, so there's a number of reasons why that, um, really the environmental impact uh is less. If we do, if, if I remember correctly from what RK and Kay said, so there's a number of reasons why a boardwalk makes the most sense on that side of the road.
Agree.
In fact, I think it's right here, Larry, just in time.
But, you know, and I didn't catch this before, but if you look at the blue box within fifteen, that text is wrong.
Oh, you're right.
This is just talking about sidewalk adjacent to Town Hall.
Yeah, they must have copied and pasted that.
And if we, if we did the boardwalk with the overlook and everything else, um. Considering that SHA is probably a long way away from elevating that segment of two sixty-one, we'd be okay.
I'd like to ma, yeah, I think that's true, Larry. I'd like to make a suggestion here. Um, but it's really for the, the entire committee to, to comment on is that they remove the overlook in this diagram. Because it's one of the few things in this plan that raised, and there were a couple, but not many. That raised uh real negative feedback from uh the public. The only, only thing I heard negative uh comments about was the idea of uh. Of extending that out, the, the way they interpreted this, um, extending that boardwalk out. Does anyone else agree with that, or, or do you think we should continue to kind of shoot for the moon and then walk it back if we need to?
Lawrence, what, are you talking about the lowermost part of this page? Uh, that's the old foundation of the house.
No, no, I'm not. I'm talking about, can you see my mouse?
Yes.
Talking about this part of the boardwalk connecting Horizons on the Bay and Seagate, which, which, which renders this notion of a, of an overlook. That people commented on, and it's really not going to happen. I mean, environmentally, it's not going to happen. It's, it's not realistic.
I say delete it.
I agree.
Yeah, in fact, in one of our previous meetings, uh, one of the members of the public indicated. And if you can picture the, the new bridge, the Fishing Creek, Creek Bridge, where it has a little bump out with a couple benches and a lookout. That something like that would be more appropriate off that boardwalk rather than an extension out to the bay itself.
You know, that's a great point, Derek, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to turn this into an entire sort of revamping of everything on the plan. But I think if you put that here, it'd be much, it would be a much, a big improvement. I, I think we should. I mean, it's not a major change to any other part of this design. It's not like they've rendered this in a million different places. I, I think doing a little bump out, um, but, but removing that, that. Which is going to be a big sticking point to a lot of people, including uh people in Horizons on the Bay, and probably people in Seagate as well. I, I think we should, we should take that off the plan to.
I'll just add to that, that that whole marsh area is an environmentally protected area. So the um pathway to get it approved from the state would be incredible. It's going to be a challenge just to get the walkway approved. With that extension, I think it would almost kill the project.
Yeah, I agree with that. So let's do that. Derek, are you okay with that? We'll put a note in there to do that.
I already got it in there.
Alright, moving on. I never really understood if, if the guy rendered in this picture was meant to sort of be someone who's about to engage in criminal activity or not. You know, leap over the railing, or did he just climb up? I don't know.
He's wearing a bike helmet, isn't he?
Oh, well, you can't trust those bikers, Matt. They're, they're no good. They wear those funny pants. You really can't trust them.
Throw a bottle at them.
Just a, a general question, and again, not having read the entire report, is there any discussion in here about extending? Um, our boardwalk further?
You mean uh to the north through Chesapeake Station?
Uh, no, I would mean basically to the west, you know, right now, when you take the bend there.
Oh, yes.
The T intersection, you take the one to the south. It ends there at a, at uh an extension of Fishing Creek, but you can see the old railroad right away ahead of you.
That's where Narnia begins.
The, the plan in here loops at that, at that, crosses over Fishing Creek. And then loops back towards Ridgefield Station and creates that loop.
Okay.
Uh, there's, there's not an extension out beyond, because that gets out. There's not an extension out beyond, because that gets out, kind of goes back to that earlier discussion about the proposed roads and pathways out beyond the town limits.
Beyond the boundary, we're beyond the boundaries of the town, so I understand.
Right.
But the idea of looping and actually creating some trails is in the, is in the plan. There's a lot of,
Yes.
There'd be a number of hurdles to make that a reality, but, but there has been some thought put into that.
Yes.
There has been a, just quick segue, but there have been a number of discussions, larger discussions across several different counties of, of, of doing some sort of a rails to trail and extending that path even to Upper Marlboro. Will that happen in our lifetimes? I certainly wouldn't bet on it, but it'd be kind of nice for some people if it did. Near the end here.
Early in the implementation, there was just a minor editorial where they, they again listed the Walk with Communities Advisor Group, but used the acronym W A G that time. So I've got that down. It's on page 84 of the report.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay.
Yeah, right there, actually.
Yep.
That was my final comment.
So what I see is, oh, Lori, do you have your hand up?
Um, I put it up a while ago.
I'm sorry. I can hear you. Yep, yep.
Oh, okay. I just had a question about one of the paths. It's those path sticks and it goes to Chesapeake Village. I was just wondering how that got there, and I know that people are going to ask me about it from my neighborhood. So I was just, can somebody tell me what that path is?
Can you, can you, any chance you can get me to a page where that path is shown?
Um, well, it's listed in the different projects and it's also, it's, it was a hard, it was presented as a hard path. It was highlighted in yellow. Just go through all the maps and I'll stop you when I see it. I'll keep my eye out for it. Sorry, I had my user error on my audio when you were going through it.
All right, we'll find it. This looks like.
Uh, it's not on that. No, it's going to be down. It's going to be down further in the plan. Not there, no. Maybe. No. Um, no. What's that? All right, I think it is here. Let me see. It's, see, it's 6A.
That's been on the maps for, for some time.
I don't know why I don't remember that.
Yeah, this is one that, this is one that I had been, I've actually tried to do that walk. It's impossible right now unless you are prepared to get wet. But to me, it was always a better option than the current safe routes to school sidewalk that they, that they want to build.
Okay, um.
Yeah, 6A and 11A, those, those two were, they were tied together, but they were a little bit, they were, they were separate. There was a reason why they were separated when we did the public input, but those, yeah, those were on there throughout the whole public input phase.
I would just, um, I don't know, you might want to point that down to the end so it doesn't go into our neighborhood because there's a lot of discussions about some other paths in our neighborhood.
Yeah, I, I think the idea, when we first talked about it, it was supposed to connect to the safe routes to school sidewalk. So, yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's a little bit off, although if, if you look at that crossing, that's that cross, that circle for the crossing on this map is a little bit off as well. It should actually be, you know, a tick up to the north.
Yeah, I just think if they're editing this just so they don't raise extra eyeballs about it, if they could just connect it at the corner, like where our neighborhood is.
Right, right. I think, yeah, yes, yeah, if they can connect both of those to the crossing over to the beach, that's, that's really the appropriate place for both of those.
Lori, just, just real quick, what other trails? Because there aren't any, there is no other access to Chesapeake Village that I'm aware of.
There's, there's nothing, it's, it's an HOA discussion and there's nothing official. They've been having meetings and they're working out details of an HOA thing, nothing for the whole town.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think that connecting it at the end of our neighborhood would be better for us.
Yeah, no, good point. I'll, let me note that.
Also, just a comment on, I think probably 11A, maybe 11B. As part of the new Beach Elementary School, there's discussions about the creating some additional pathways to link to, like the railway trail.
Well, that's what 11A is doing.
Yes.
Are you, is there a change there, Larry, that you're recommending, or you're just pointing that out?
No, I'm just pointing it out that they're also including it as part of the new Beach Elementary.
Yeah. So are there any other general comments at this point? There were, there were one or two questions. I'm wondering if we've answered those as we've gone. So I think our next steps then are to aggregate this feedback and get it back to RK and Kay. This is something that Derek and I'll do. I say Derek and I, and by Derek and I, I mean, I should do it, but Derek has probably done most of it, so he and I will coordinate. Just decide if we want to speak with one voice to them or just transition the voices from him to me. We'll, we'll figure that out. And when we do that, we'll communicate back what they tell us they think the timing will be. Are they being RK and Kay in this case, what, what it will take them to get, to get a final plan back to us. You heard the earlier discussion, so I'm kind of targeting this to our committee members now. Let's assume that they are responsive and they get these back to us fairly quickly. Does our committee feel like we need to do another round of review as we've done here, or can we make the assumption that what they give us will be close enough to final that we could, we could move forward with getting a resolution to Town Council?
I think the latter.
I, I would agree with the latter. I would agree that I'd hate to sit around and spin our wheels around this for another month or, or six weeks and end up, you know, in April trying to get something on the council agenda. I'd rather do it now. And, you know, when we met with planning and zoning, even though they, even though they, they know that they have a fair amount of time yet to, to complete the comprehensive plan, they are moving pretty swiftly. Christopher Kubiak gave us a nice presentation at the last council meeting and they are making progress. The sooner they have this in their hands, the better. I'd like to see us target the March work session to have this on the agenda. Does, does anyone feel that that's just not appropriate?
That would be March 8.
I mean, this is, go ahead.
Yeah, I don't think really any of these are showstoppers for them. I mean, they might take some time, you know, for instance, taking off that, that on Project 15 that we talked about, removing that and putting a bump out in or something. That might just take them a little bit of time, but I mean, they're, they're working for us, so if we, if we tell them we want something changed, they'll, they'll change it. But I don't, I don't see how any of these are showstopper comments on our part. They're, they're really more either clarification, you know, corrections, or are just to, you know, highlight a little bit more.
And I, I would agree with that. I don't think any of these changes would stop us from moving, moving forward with a resolution. We know this is going to be a living document. We know it's going to see changes and updates, particularly when we get right into the nitty gritty of implementing some of these things. And we have to make compromises against funding and community feedback and so on. So, but as a master plan, as a guiding plan, I think what we have here is, is, represents, you know, really solid work, a lot of input from the public, and about as close to, you know, 90% positive on all the elements here from public feedback that you're ever going to get on a public plan. And I'd, I'd like to see us kind of move forward with that unless, I don't want to be too aggressive, but that's kind of my take.
Yeah, and just to add to it, I think our, our bar to set is the idea that this plan can be picked up, you know, four, eight, 12 years from now, where none of the current members of the administration are, you know, still here, and, and people who are there at that time can take this plan and still find it useful and move forward on something. I mean, if, if we feel that we've met that bar, then I, you know, we'll, like Charlie said, we'll understand that, you know, what, what actually is built will may, may look a lot different than what's here, but this, this is the guide to get us there. And if someone else can pick this plan up and achieve that, then, you know, we've met our, our goal.
And this, Doc, not to beat a dead horse here, but this document also is strategic. And, you know, one project informs the other. Once we get into the tactics, you know, we're going to, we're going to redesign and rejigger any of the, any of the specific plans, the boardwalk between Horizons and Seagate, sidewalks on Cox Road, all of that. So someone else had a comment, I caught him off, and then I'd like to just talk about next steps.
Charlie, it's Larry. I'll just offer as a retired and recovering consulting engineer, if you need any additional muscle in dealing with RK and Kay, I've dealt with them before. I'd be happy to help.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, they've been really good, so I don't, I don't anticipate a lot of pushback.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree with that, but, you know, Larry, one of the conversations that, wow, I, I agree with what Derek said. I don't anticipate any, any issues with them, and I think they want to get paid and, and I think they'll make these changes pretty quickly. So if we move to the second bullet of our agenda, and I know.
Can I interrupt just for a second? Sorry, this is Sarah Kempf. I just had a comment. I think it would be helpful if you, once you get that far, to make this document publicly available so that we could look at it. From those of us who have a little bit of concerns about some things that are in here, I don't want to feel like we're rushed or not being heard. So I think having it, you know, be a, be on the website so that we can share it and look at it is helpful.
The, the minute we have a finalized document, the minute we get these changes back, Sarah, this will be on the website.
That was from the perspective I was coming that if you're going to put it out to the public, you want to make sure that it's what we want to be put out.
Yes, that makes sense.
And so the, the only thing I'm trying to move forward on is, is getting the, I mean, this had, various forms of this have been in the public arena for, for quite some time, all the way back to Taste the Beaches in September. So the, the, the final details that we're talking about now, we want to get those changes in before we put a digital copy out there publicly. But we don't expect, I mean, as you've heard from this meeting, we don't expect a ton of major changes before we put this out to Town Council, and I just would like to move that process forward to try to get a resolution on the agenda for March.
Can I just ask one more question just about, like, my concern is the 12 and perhaps 13 on your map there? And just like what you're thinking about the likelihood of that happening and, you know, I live in Bayview Hills, which is, it runs right along next to, and so, you know, I feel like we have some concerns and I haven't had opportunity to express those in a forum that seemed like was the right one to talk, talk it through with. So there's some concern in, in our area about number 12.
Can you elaborate a little bit on that? What the concerns are?
Well, one, from an environmental perspective that you've, you know, we've already really disrupted this marsh and putting a boardwalk right at the, the edge of the woods and marsh, you know, that's where most animal activity takes place. That's where the biggest diversity is. So you're really disrupting the natural activity there. And then for the homes that are just up from there, you know, that will bump into property that's just like down the hill from our houses and right along the condos there. So it will definitely have like a public impact on our, you know, our mushy mark, marsh at the bottom of the hill.
Um, can I chime in a little bit?
Yep.
Um, so I don't think that we would pursue any of these projects for the detail without getting public input again. Is that right, Charlie?
I think that that, that's not only true, it would be, how do I phrase, it would be impossible to tackle a project like number 12 without involving.
All the stakeholders.
Yeah, and that by all, you know, well, state highway wouldn't be involved in that, but certainly MDE, so the environmental concerns, you know, there's hurdles there that would have to be approved by the powers that, that sort of regulate those things, the homeowners, certainly in Bayview Hills. So, yeah, I think that, that no specific project, again, go from strategy to tactics, no specific project is going to move forward until all the stakeholders are hashed out what those details are.
Yeah, and just for reference, the, the, the existing railway trail took a decade to put in place, plus or minus. It took a decade. So like Charlie said, these, these are conceptual. You know, these are, you know, ideas, what could be, you know, the reality, especially for a project like that and its location, it's it's, it's long, it's a long project. So there will be plenty of opportunities for public collaboration along the way as well. Before, you know, I would think before the town even decides to pursue, you know, the, the grants or the, you know, the early construction designs, you know, there's going to be a lot of public input as well, so.
Just out of curiosity, because there's not really a scale bar on this, but that path that Sarah was mentioning, number 12, can you give me a sense of how far away from the actual dwellings in Bayview Hills that southern portion of the proposed boardwalk would be? I mean, you were talking about wildlife, Sarah, but are you, there's no like riparian forest there, is there? Isn't there just like homes? And if so, how close to the homes would this trail be?
There's definitely riparian buffer there. Where it turns south, there's, it's steep right about where the number 12 is, and then it flattens out. So when you get a few dots below that, it's pretty flat and there is, there are trees between the condos and the marsh, but there's not very much, there's just not a lot of space there. There'd be, I mean, I would imagine they'd put the boardwalk pretty high and you'd probably be able to look out your window at the, from the condos and see the people walking past.
So maybe for the purposes of this meeting, maybe we, again, just sort of keep it at a stra- So maybe for the purposes of this meeting, maybe we uh, again, just sort of keep it at a strategic level. Um, the notion of having loops and things connected um was a core part of our, of our effort in this plan. The the way that we would accomplish that from the end of uh from the end of Bayview Hills out into the Kellums Field area could take the form of uh part of it could go through Bayview Hills with marked sidewalks or or trails. Part of it could be a boardwalk if there's places that that can be built. Uh, so there's a number of ways to to create that connectivity and it's just way premature to 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 try to figure out where we would sink pilings for a boardwalk at this point in time, if if such a thing could even happen. Is that a reasonable way to to phrase it at this point?
Yeah, Charlie, I think you're spot on.
And maybe there's just this way that you can make that clear or like I haven't really necessarily understood the process, like we're approving the plan. We'll take it to the committee or to the town council and approve it. So, you know, it's hard to know from the outside what that really means from implementation, you know, in my backyard.
So yeah, everything in here is conceptual. And you know, the re- the reality, like like Charles, it may look different, or there may be, you know, the reality may be not even be pictured on this map. But uh, you know, this is just, again, the the concepts of of walkability and and linking what we have. Uh, you know, and to look to create that, you know, that that full, that town, full town walkability.
And to look at things holistically. Again, I keep using the word strategy, but but, you know, we don't want to build a road or we don't want to, we don't want to suggest building a trail uh uh to a particular place if it just dead ends and and no one ever uses it, right? The idea is to look holistically at things that connect and create the ability for people to get from their neighborhood to Rollins or from their neighborhood to walk a loop uh that that includes diverse scenery and so on. So it's it's meant to have a strategic uh feel to it as well. So that, you know, no different than than the comprehensive plan talks very much about how to massage zoning or how to uh target certain areas to to create the vision that the town wants. Breaking ground on these projects is is another, another thing entirely. Getting funding for these projects is another thing entirely.
Okay, thanks very much.
So good feedback all for sure. Um, and I think one message that I I just want to echo one more time, when we have a final draft from RK and K, it will be publicly digitally available, uh probably printed copies as well in town hall and and the library, places where we've had our placards uh and signage in the past, uh and post COVID, um, you know, more opportunities to to meet face to face about it.
Charlie, it won't be a draft at that point, will it?
I didn't, I'm sorry, did I say draft?
You did.
I I meant documents, but okay.
So Charlie, this is Lori. Can I chime in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, um, I was just going to say when we put that out, um, it would be good to have those process questions kind of answered upfront. Um, just letting people know that when we take up in individual projects, there will be another um outreach to determine details or whatever wording we can put upfront so that they know that they'll, they'll have a chance to to give input on the details.
Yeah, I agree with that, Lori. I think that um RK and K covers that in their introduction, but I think it's a little bit um it's obtuse and 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 long, so maybe we can come up with two sentences that captures that as an introduction when we post it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Chris Martinez, you had your hand up. I'm sorry, I just noticed. I apologize.
Hey, no issues. Uh, hey, you know, um, my wife and I are uh, we we just recently purchased in in the area this December. And uh, we're we're physically not living there. We 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 won't come there for for a couple of years. We we have to head out to Europe for a couple of years and come back. But hey, you you know, I uh, I just kind of want to put context, I think, what I what I've been hearing in 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 the past hour or so, and and although you guys are really in the weeds and 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 on the planning of this, I just got to tell you, uh, my wife and I and my my children, we're really encouraged by uh by what we're hearing and we appreciate the incredible incredible amount of attention to detail that all of you are putting in in into this plan. And uh, although some of it's aspirational and and strategic in nature, uh, you know, we we do think it's very important what you're working on, the walkability. Uh, when I get there, I'll have a son that's uh, that's going to be about fourteen and a daughter that's going to be about nine. And and having sidewalks is is very important to us, particularly in the day of of folks texting and driving. And uh, and and for physical fitness for my spouse and I, it's it's important as well. And uh, e- even the bike paths, I know sometimes uh, you know, we think that we we have paths to nowhere. Uh, you know, we, her and I have been fortunate, we live in Nova now. Uh, we've lived in uh, close to Annapolis before, along the VNA trail. Um, Seoul, South Korea, in Europe, we're going back to Europe and a lot of these bike paths, uh, they they weren't all necessarily built one day. They were built in segments. So uh, when we say the uh, you know, it's strategic in nature, you know, sometimes you just got to build it in chunks and uh work with adjacent communities to to figure it all out. You shoot for the stars and fall back on the trees. But I just want to say, you know, we're we're really excited about joining the community. We're really excited about coming back there uh another point in time in a couple of years. We really, really appreciate the 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 thought that's put into everything you guys are doing. And uh, we we just want to thank you really from the bottom of our heart. And uh, you know, when when I hear the thought that's going on uh behind what's going on here, um, you know, it just makes us uh more assured that we we made the right call in uh joining the community at Chesapeake Beach. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Chris. Those are very uh, very nice comments. Um, and we appreciate that. And I, you know, I hope others sort of uh I I know others, uh, you know, have concerns about a specific project here or there and and uh, we with the community certainly respects that. So um, you know, we're trying to craft a vision and uh we just, we want to do what's best for the community, but I appreciate that feedback. So I'd like to um wrap up here. We've been at it for a good hour and forty minutes. I think this has been a really good meeting. Um, next steps are going to be uh Derek and I'll coordinate and get stuff back to RK and K to get another draft. As soon as we know what their timing is, we'll let the rest of our group know. Um, and in the meantime, Derek, I I would suggest that we reach out to Holly um to try to get the uh try to get the resolution into the March work session, uh unless you, if you want to talk about that offline or you think that that's too aggressive. What are your thoughts?
Now, yeah, we'll, we'll that that'll be easy to do. Uh, let's find out if we can get RK and K to make these changes and get them back to us. You know, by the end of the month or the first couple of days in March, getting it on the agenda for the eighth, we can, as long as I mean, we have till about the fourth to get it on the agenda. So uh, that that's not a problem, but you know, let's get this back to RK and K uh through Holly uh as soon as we can. You know, if there's any discussion that they need, we'll we'll do that and uh get that back from them. And that really will dictate you know, the the work session and then the recommendation forward. I mean, it worse comes to worse, we don't need to do the work session. We should, it'd be good practice, but if the timing works out and we can introduce the resolution, you know, at the March meeting, right? And then talk through it there because what we have comment, you know, public comment there, or I mean, uh, council comment.
And if it's April, if it's April, it's April, but you know, if if we don't want it to drag on. But that's good. So you and so we'll talk, we'll talk offline and we'll keep the committee posted. And then as far as the, as our next meeting, uh, you know, if we get back on a regular cadence, our next meeting would be on the fifteenth. Um, it seems to me that our next goal as a group is to figure out which of these projects we're going to try to tackle first and then figure out how to get them funded. It seems to me also that the resolution should be uh in place before we do that. It's going to need to be in place before we do that. And we'll also know more about where this will fit in the comprehensive plan and the timing on that. Should we plan to meet on the fifteenth or should we plan uh to see where we are in a couple of weeks before we set that meeting on the calendar?
Are you asking anyone in particular?
I was sort of throwing it out. If if no one, if, go ahead, Amanda.
Yeah, I I think in the meantime, I mean, between now and then, whether it's March fifteenth or even later, uh, you know, individually, think, take all the information, you know, from from the first time we've met to today, all the public input, you know, the plan that you have and you know, make your recommendation to the council. You know, what would your recommendation be? Where to start? You know, because implementation is the, you know, it's the fun part of this now. So uh, but it's it's a challenging part. So uh, you know, I think I think Charlie and I can get this this resolution approved by council pretty easily. Uh, I think everyone has been very supportive along the way and I don't see that changing. Uh, but from there, you know, one of, one of our tasks in in this work group will be to uh provide that input on which which ones to tackle first. And you know, and into some, some ways, how, you know, we've been uh collecting the uh, the available grants. Uh Lori and Charlie have that that spreadsheet. Uh, also this report has a number of grants, um, you know, take some time, maybe look at some of those and see if tho- if those grant opportunities align with recommendations and and the timing of those grant proposals, uh, you know, let's see. Maybe chart out, you know, when when we apply for some of these grants. I think that, I mean, that's something we all can kind of work on on, and you know, between now until we meet again. And so when we come together, we can now plan to uh to make those recommendations to council and the mayor and on which which projects to start. And then Charlie and I can get this, get this plan to the finish line from here.
So based on that, I think we should assume that we're going to meet on the fifteenth. If if there's a reason that we need to cancel that, we will, but let's kind of assume that we are going to meet. Even if it just turns into a brainstorming session um on some of the things that Jared, Derek just talked about in terms of implementation. Divvying up tasks for uh researching grants, uh, stuff like that. Even if it's a forty-five minute meeting, I think it'd be nice to try to get some momentum going again. And and getting, as Derek says, getting this plan across the finish line, so to speak, is a is a good momentum builder for that. So unless people object to that, let's just tentatively plan on that and then we'll, we'll, we'll touch base via email over the coming weeks.
Sounds good.
Sound good.
And so Amanda, if you have any more uh updates to this that we didn't capture, we talked about, but maybe didn't capture, if you could send those along to Charlie and I, and we'll make sure those get included in the uh the information we send back to RK and K. You're you're on mute. I can't, we can't hear you. Now, we can't hear you, Amanda. Or just just reach out to us, you know, when you're, when it's convenient for you. We'll make sure we roll up those, up your, all your comments.
And Madeline, we have yours, rest assured. So Derek, you and I'll touch base over the next day or so.
Yep, sounds good.
I'm going to go ahead then and adjourn uh this meeting. I I just want to thank everyone again, uh particularly the folks who came and provided feedback to the public. Uh Larry and Chris and uh some of the other folks are gone, I guess, Sarah. Uh, but we really appreciate hearing from you guys and it's great that that folks are involved. Uh, so thank you, everyone. Um, we will be talking soon.
Okay, bye.
All right, take care, everybody.
Thanks, Derek. Bye.